Bring the, uh, the meeting of Tuesday, November fourteenth of the Planning Commission to order. Excuse me. First order of business is. Public comments?
Can we do the roll call first? Sure.
Roll call.
Yeah, we'll get started with the roll call.
Roll call to start. See who's here.
Yes, have to confirm a quorum. Chair Dawson.
Here.
Chair, Vice Chair Bluth.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman is absent. Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
Commissioner Silva.
Here.
Thank you. That is a committee of, uh, commission of six today. For staff, we have Planning Manager Hill, Associate Planner Buggert, Reporting Secretary Cleary, and Administrative Assistant Argon Wright, who will now take this opportunity to announce to the public how to join on Zoom.
Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure sized service that connects you with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com forward slash City of Monterey with a 10 second delay and Comcast Channel 25, but up to 90 second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. The PC meeting today, that is, that is, uh, one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll free. Again, the webinar for today is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for Zoom are available at monterey.org forward slash public meetings. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit.
Back to you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with the consent items. What we have on consent today is, uh, minutes from October 24th. Does anyone have any, uh, comments, uh, to do with minutes of October 24th?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, so, um, on the top of page three of the minutes, it says that, um, Commissioner LaTossa motioned and Silva seconded. And then below that, there's a repetition of that, a paragraph that's all underlined. And there it says that, um, on a motion by Commissioner Silva, seconded by Fletcher. So I think what was erroneously done is they took that, that, uh, as a cannabis, item, I think they just copied the, um, the motion and second from the previous. I, uh, I did.
Saving, saving time.
Yeah, so I, I, I think, I'm pretty sure I did make that motion. And so I'd like to ask that that, um, page three, uh, you know, uh, underlying part be correct.
Okay.
We'll make that correct.
We're, we're getting head nods over here, so that's a good thing. Anyone else have a comment about the minutes? No? Well, I do. It, it seems that, 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 the, the, the rules for writing the minutes has changed in that, uh, we're, we're not getting, we're not getting all the information we should get from the minutes. And it, it's, it's, uh, it's been brought to my attention more than once that, uh, that, uh, we could, we could do a better job with the minutes. I, I don't know how, how we can arrange to get that done.
So as we discussed previously, we've moved to an action minutes, protocol, so following the city council, um, procedures. So we capture the actions taken by the commission. We do not transcribe word for word every statement that's made throughout the meeting.
Well, I was concerned with, with attributes to who spoke. That's, that's not always, that's not always done.
Could you elaborate, please?
I think I can elaborate. We did for some time point out specifically which commission member, um, made which comments. The action minutes guideline state that what is more relevant is what the board decided as a whole. And that, that applies to every board in the city, including from city council to, you know, parks and rec, museums, planning commission, ARC. We all, the action manage focus on the, the whole board, not individual members, unless they're, they're making the motion or the second.
Mr. Mike?
I, I would say I've noted it as well, and it's specifically the paragraph after the project manager makes their presentation. It generally refers to that questions and comments were made by the commission and answered by whomever. And I in the past, I've been on a board where those kind of comments became pertinent in a lawsuit. So who made the comment was the important part because in that case, we had to go back to that person to bring them forward because nobody remembered the facts that were presented and that by bringing up the name out of the minutes, we were able to recon- reconstruct the issue. And I, Mike's suggestion was going to be the same as what Mike just made, that and I have seen that in, in the minutes made by council, that typically the name is is associated with the question, and that's all I was going to ask. I believe that the, the Brown Act requires, you know, minutes and it goes to what Jennifer said in, in general, but it says you can be as more specific if you desire.
Yeah, so I think the approach has been taken to mirror, uh, what they, what the city clerk's office does for a city council so that we could be, um, consistent throughout all hearing bodies. To your earlier point about, um, and, and the sense of instance of litigation and who said what, we, these, these meetings are all recorded and are on video. So if we need access to that information, we have it readily available. We've moved to action minutes to just capture efficiently, um, the consensus of what happened at the meeting and to document what actions were taken by the commission as a whole. But we do, uh, I assure you, we do have, uh, copies of all these meetings, so if we need to refer to specifics, we can certainly do that. I would have to defer to the clerk's office on our retention policy. Um, Jennifer, do you know?
For life, for, they're, um, required to be kept for life.
They keep them in the cloud?
Minutes and videos, the recording, yes.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess the, uh, the, 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 the assumption is that the, uh, the council is happy with that.
Yes.
Well, we're not happy with it here. So, um, I guess if they're not complaining, that means they're happy with it. That's the way that works.
Well, they adopted the policy, so I would assume they're quite happy with it.
But are the action minutes just an adjunct for the video? I mean, you, the video is your primary record of.
Yeah, I mean, that's what's used to complete the minutes for that you're voting on.
Are just Reader's Digest summary.
My only request is that we evaluate it to see if that is the case because I, I seem to know more detail at council and it may be that they directed that, that's, that's up to them. But I just want to be consistent in my mind.
Yeah, and we can definitely, we certainly can confer with the city clerk's office on the level of detail that they provide for their action minutes and we'll, we'll certainly evaluate that.
Okay. Can we have a, can we have a roll call on whether we like the minutes or not?
Do we need to make a motion?
That's what this was.
Oh, um, I'll, uh, make a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda.
A second.
And that is as amended, correct? Per Latassa's, uh, Commissioner Latassa's suggestion. Thank you. And for the vote, we have Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman is absent. Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries and the October 24th, 2023 minutes are approved as amended.
Thank you, thank you. Um, now it's time for a general public comment. For items that are not on today's agenda. If, uh, you'd like to, uh, speak to, uh, the council in their purview, this is the time to do it.
And Spencer, uh, Spencer will remind the public how to join.
To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll free. The PC webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org forward slash public meetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commentators will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom.
I see no hands raised in person or online.
Okay, so we'll close that, the general public comment and go on to, uh, public hearing, uh, item number three. Consider 95 Prescott Avenue Application AP twenty-three dash oh one nine nine, Appealing Architectural Review Committee Resolution A two three dash oh three one. Yeah, approving, approving sign permit application. SI twenty-three oh one seven three for two wall signs, one projecting sign and one hanging sign. Appellate Marco, Marco Espina, Espina. Sorry about that. We have a, uh, staff report for this, please?
Yes, I will share my screen. Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Buggert and I'm an associate planner with the City of Monterey's Planning Division. And today we're here to talk about 95 Prescott Avenue for sign appeal AP twenty-three zero one nine nine at today's Planning Commission meeting. The recommendation from city staff is that the Planning Commission grants the appeal and overturn Architecture Review Committee Resolution A twenty-three dash zero three one. The subject property is in the western side of the city, northwestern and, uh, near the Canary Row area. This was here at the last Planning Commission meeting. Remind on some background, existing signage was approved for the property in 2010 for the Canary Row Brewing Company business. And that approval also included architectural adjustments at the property. And last year, a use permit was approved for the site for a combination brewery slash mini golf, um, business. On September 20th, the Architecture Review Committee approved the sign permit. The application, ARC approved four out of the eight originally proposed signs and for a total of eighty-six point five four square feet. At the last Planning Commission meeting on October 24th, the Planning Commission reviewed the original three hundred and eighty-two point two-two square feet of signage. And the Planning Commission directed that the applicant return to PC with a maximum square footage of two hundred and sixty-five square feet, which per the sign guidelines is based on linear frontage of the building. So the applicant came back with a proposal, including four signs primarily facing Prescott Avenue and Wave Street as depicted here. Now the next couple of slides, I'll go over exactly where they are and what they look like. These are the four signs. The originally proposed projecting sign near the keg fixture, the sign over the doorway, and they reduce the signage of signs that would be along the roof line of the structure where there is some existing signage from the previous business. In total, the square footage of signage proposed is two hundred and sixty-four point five square feet, peeking in a half square foot underneath that maximum. This is as the building stands roughly today. This is as the applicant proposes for the structure. You can see the two along the roof line up here. This is a very rough sketch. Along with the projecting sign here and the sign over here, both of these are illuminated and as previously discussed, uh, that was okay. And both were previously approved through the Architectural Review Committee. The lettering along the top would include, uh, this textured footprint similar to what's on the building now. And here is a brief summary of it. Uh, what the applicant originally proposed, the three hundred and forty-eighty-four square feet, what ARC approved, which was the eighty point five four square feet and Planning Commission direction of two hundred and sixty-five square feet. Findings necessary for approval are that the proposal achieves the purposes and objectives of the sign ordinance, including, uh, preventing a proliferation of signs and that the signage would be equitable between sign owners. It was found previously that this would not necessarily, uh, not result in a proliferation of signage. And based on Planning Commission's previous discussion and staff review, uh, enforcing the square foot maximum of two hundred and sixty-five square feet based on linear footage would at least bring the signage into closer equity with sign owners. The second finding for approval is that the signage needs to be consistent with the guidelines or ARC determines the proposal better achieves those objectives and subsequently Planning Commission. In the case of signage that does not fit within it, they can come to ARC and subsequently you for an increase or deviation from those guidelines. So at this point, there are only three slight deviations. The projecting sign is larger and higher than typically allowed. There are three wall signs proposed instead of two, the one illuminated above the doorway and the two up along the roof line on the different street frontages. And the two proposed wall signs up above exceed the guideline maximum of fifty square feet. And finally, the proposal must be consistent with the general plan. It is substantially consistent and supports the commercial business, uh, through following through this process. Conditions placed on the project are in ununique. We would defer to the standard conditions of approval, building permit installation for signage on the building walls and so on. Therefore, the recommendation from city staff is that the Planning Commission grant the appeal and overturn the Architecture Review Committee approval. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is also on the line and.
Solid effort. Uh, questions for staff? Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, thanks, Matthew. So I, there's one of the, um, screenshots you put up, uh, the first one, I think. I didn't quite understand that there were numbers in parenthesis. Can you go back a couple of slides?
Absolutely. And that is a fair point. I did not.
Yeah, what does a parenthesis mean?
Originally, the square footage of the sign was one hundred and thirty-five square feet. After coming back to Planning Commission, they
They've shrunk it a bit.
They've shrunk it slightly to, to fit into those maximums. The, uh, the, for instance, this top right one, the frontage of the building here is sixty-five feet. And the width of the sign itself would be fifty-five feet.
Okay. Great. So the, keep it on that page. So that, I know these are all just like, um, sort of mockups of, of the way it would look. And with, uh, uh, there are decals that are going to be placed on the brick. And it seemed to me there was some, uh, there was some, some attempt before to make these letters look sort of weathered, almost with a translucency where you would see the brick through the letter, kind of like an old weathered sign, painted sign. Is that still the case like that?
Yes.
Well, you can't really, I mean, that, so that's from the applicant?
This is from the applicant, and I will also note that even the lettering that is currently on there does not specifically have brick detailing in it. It has a similar just textured form to it.
Right, but this has a, um, sort of an off-white color and, and what they've done is they've added some sort of graphic, um, colors on the letters that are sort of the same as the brick behind it, I guess. That's what's going on.
Roughly, yes, although it may be a question better related to the applicant.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm happy with it. It's just some of the mockups look quite white, like the letters were really white. And this, this looks a little bit more, you know, uh, of the, the intention of the approval of the original sign from thirteen years ago.
Yes, the, the original sign application had the lettering in just plain white and they provided this example of this particular word with this, uh, detailing on it. They didn't update the entire graphic. They were showing the.
Yeah, actually on that one, you can sort of see some of the.
So this one was their pure white version and then as the example that they gave of Tipsy, it would have this type of texturing on it.
Okay, and it's, it's conditioned, I mean, obviously that's the application, so they would.
This would be.
Painted a white version of that, that wouldn't be acceptable. It would have to be kind of like that.
It needs to follow this aesthetic.
Red. I mean, obviously it is white, it's more of an off-white than a. Okay, that's all I have.
And it's required to be a decal so they can't actually paint the, the historic facade. So in the event that it didn't have this appearance, it could be corrected.
Okay, thanks.
So the, the font's just distressed. It's got a weathered component to it.
Yeah, it's a decal, so it's just a, a design feature of, of the style, like you said, a distressed kind of appearance.
A feature, not a bug. Uh, anyone else?
Well, then my question was exactly the same thing. I just thought it was, the first illustration looks almost like it's illuminated. And I, that's not, I think, what we were talking about. So I agree with, with Terry.
No, but, no muss?
No muss.
Can I have a, well, can we have a, a presentation from the, from the applicant? See here?
The applicant is on the line. Marco Espina. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. I don't have any presentation whatsoever. I just want to thank you for your time.
If you have any questions for the applicant, now is a good time to do that. Otherwise, we can move to public comments.
Questions to the applicant?
Peter?
I'm curious as to how, how you apply this decal over brick? Is there some adhesive that is on the decal? Is it a sticky thing or glue? What, 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 how do you do this?
Yeah, it's actually a very, uh, laborious process because, um, well, the decal is, uh, is a three M industrial vinyl. If you wish, industrial meaning made for signage or exterior. But then you have to heat up that vinyl and with the foam roller, you apply it to the brick and the heating of the vinyl, he allows the, uh, electricity to conform to, to the motor and to defects or the unevenness on the brick. Uh, the vinyl also has a, a clear opaque, um, not opaque, satin clear vinyl overlaid on top of it to protect it so it lasts a little bit longer uh, with the weather. That's about it.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for clarification, uh, this applied verbiage will not be bright like it appeared in the illustration. It will be more like the weathered texture that's existing.
Correct, yeah. We're gonna try to do something that it looks aged and distressed. And obviously, um, yeah, a white color there will not look good, so we have to to come up with an art that is, yeah, that looks a little bit older than just white and and that red is coming through.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sure, you're welcome.
No more questions? Okay, can I have a, well, a public here? Or the public? There's no public happening?
To remind the public to join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll free. Then enter the webinar ID. The webinar ID for the Planning Commission is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org forward slash public meetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commentators will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom.
And again, I see no hands raised in person or online.
Let me give him another five seconds. Yeah. Okay. Can I have a a motion?
In discussion?
What discussion?
I, I think that we've already been through this once. I think that they've done everything that we've asked and I can support the motion. I will make the, the motion that we accept it as recommended.
Second that.
Okay, any, any, uh, more comments, more, uh, discussion of the motion? No?
And Vice Chair Blue, that was you seconding? Thank you. And for the vote, Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Blue.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman is still absent. Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries with a unanimous vote. It is appealable to the council, um, within the next ten days.
Okay, moving on to, uh, item number four. Consider three five zero Kai Principal Use Permit Amendment PA twenty-three oh two two one to amend conditions of approval to the previously approved use permit. To amend conditions of approval to the previously approved use permit UP twenty-three oh-one-eight-oh. Allowing modification to an existing GTE multinet California Limited Partnership DBA. Verizon Wireless Communications Facility Section six-four-oh-nine-A eligible facilities request on an existing hotel building. Hello, can we have a, a staff report?
Sure can. Give me just a second, I'll share a screen. Okay, Levi Hill, Planning Manager for City of Monterey. I'll be presenting this next item on the agenda. Uh, as the chair just mentioned, this is a request for a permit amendment, uh, PA twenty-three oh-two-two-one. For Verizon Wireless Facility at three-fifty Kaya Principal. Project location, as you may remember, is located at the Marriott Downtown, uh, located at three-fifty Ka- uh, Kaya Principal. With Franklin Street to the south, uh, Pacific Street to the west, and then Del Monte Avenue located to the north. This is an existing rooftop, um, wireless facility. So a quick brief, uh, refresher, on September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission approved a sixty-four-oh-nine eligible facilities request. Uh, at this location to approve modifications to an existing, um, wireless, uh, facility for Verizon Communications. Uh, the scope of work included the installation of five new pool cans, uh, the installation of two-inch conduit from the ground level to the pool box at the shelter. And then installation of four-inch conduit from the ground vault to the new pool can. This is just a overview of the site plan showing the rooftop equipment area. And large site plan showing the, uh, image to the right there shows the pool can located at the ground level. Or pool box, I'm sorry. Here's an elevation also showing the ground level work with the conduit, um, path to travel to the rooftop facility. And then the image on the right shows the, uh, proposed pool box. And, uh, again, a reminder, this was all the scope of work was previously approved by this commission at September twelfth. And another elevation. And then photosounds. Um, as you can notice in the bottom image, the small box, uh, is what's being applied, the only exterior change to the building. Again, previously approved as September twelfth action. So the reason we're here tonight, uh, there is in a, a condition of approval that was placed on the, uh, uh, resolution. For the approved action from September twelfth, uh, specifically that condition of approval. Um, pertain to, uh, required FAA approvals, specifically FAA Form seven-four-six-zero dash one. As well as the written, uh, authorization, uh, of the no objection from the FAA. Um, that, uh, condition of approval, um, was erroneously applied to this project. As this project does not propose any increased heights, uh, to any structures and also does not propose any upgraded antennas that may interfere with. Uh, aeronautic navigation or, um, any, um, technological issues that may be created from that. So again, as we just saw, this proposal only involves the installation of new pool boxes, pool cans and conduit. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the permit amendment to amend the condition of approval. To the previously approved use permit at three-fifty Kaya Principal. And that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff?
Just a quick one, uh, I wanted to confirm that the conduit is going to be inside the walls and not surface mounted on.
That is correct.
Okay, can you go back to condition one, please? So, um. Just to make sure we get it right this time, so, uh. So there's A, B and C, uh, actually condition twelve. Um, so what's changed? How do we know what's different here from what was approved on September?
This condition in its entirety would be strike from the resolution.
And where does it say?
Uh, well, on this slide, it doesn't. This is the condition that's subject to elimination.
Okay, so before we go, I'm just curious, what is in, in the A part, where's the bottom? What does AIA stand for?
Airport Influence Area.
Okay, so there, so show us where it says it's going to be struck from the, um.
Again, on this slide, it's not, does not say that, as you'll see on the attached resolution, that's, uh, included in your packet. This condition of approval is not included on that resolution.
Okay, great. Thanks a lot. That's all.
Resolution is the important part.
Yeah.
Yeah. No more questions? Is there anyone, uh, in the, uh, audience raising hands?
Uh, we first see if there's an applicant online.
Oh, there is. The applicant, sorry, you said that, or it would be your turn to speak now if you'd like to. Please state your name for the record if you feel comfortable doing so.
My name is Greg Brown. I represent Verizon Wireless, and I'm simply here to answer any questions if you have.
I had a question. How, how did we get to the position where we put in all this FAA stuff when it really doesn't apply?
So those are actually submittal requirements for all, um, wireless, uh, facilities. Um, however, it has been determined through consultation with the city attorney's office that they're not, that. Requirements not applicable to all sixty-four-oh-nine eligible facilities request. So it's been the practice to apply that, um, and that was, that came out of, uh, whenever the wireless ordinance was being, um. Reviewed and, uh, we were taking in public comment and consulting with the Airport Land Use Commission. That was a requirement that they were very, felt very strongly about including, um, understandably so. Uh, for most of these projects that include antenna upgrades or height increases, those can have impacts on, um. Yeah, aeronautical issues or flight path, um, and instrument use for aircraft. Um, this particular, these, these types of requests do not, um, have that risk and therefore not applicable.
Did we have any comments for the applicant? Any questions?
Just to clarify, we're not going to be doing this again.
I hope not.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any, uh, any persons out in the, uh, ethernet?
I see no hands raised online, but if Spencer would like to announce. How hands can be raised or how individuals watching from home could be enjoying, now's the time.
To join by telephone, dial eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four toll-free, then enter the webinar ID. The PC webinar ID is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. Uh, if prompted for participant ID, press pound and detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at. Monterey.org forward slash public meetings. Uh, at this point, uh, to, to provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, and then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commentators will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, um, bring it back to the chairs over here. Um, any comments? Yes, sir.
So when we heard this the first time, I made a comment, um, kind of directed staff regarding. Um, in my opinion, how minor this project was and why it was required to come before the PC and. As I recall, the, the, uh, the reply was, well, this is part of the city ordinance. And it's written in such a way where it doesn't distinguish between the most minor of pool box modifications to the most major. Antenna modifications, and I'm just wondering if there is any, um, way the city can revisit this. So that we don't have to be bothered with such de minimis applications.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you have a comment? Go ahead.
I was gonna defer to members of this commission that were a part of that process.
Yeah, we were, actually.
That's where you're going.
I thank you, uh. There's a lot of concern on this topic in this city. And it was expressed until one o'clock in the morning. Occasion, and with, you've filled that audience standing room only. They wanted to ensure that we reviewed these applications in a standardized manner. And I think that we heard the message and that the ordinances were written to ensure that that was covered. I understand, Peter, what you're saying, but. This was. Almost in concrete.
Well, thank you for the history. I, I wasn't aware of what that happening, but I still believe that. In terms of public safety, which is a concern, I guess. Um, there should be a distinction between these types of.
Sixty-four-oh-nine? You know, we're talking with the, the automatic.
Yeah.
Application process.
Anyway, just food for thought, that's my opinion on this. It's not gonna dissuade me from voting for it, but.
Yeah. Any comments, Michael?
Um, okay, so we're, we're, uh, we, we have no, no takers on the, on the internet?
No hands went up.
Okay.
So, sure. I just wanted to say, uh, it's, it's great to get that detail, because I, you know, Peter made such a great point. But the public obviously wanted this level of scrutiny, so it's kind of a, you know, I put, I have to give Peter credit for using the word de minimis. I, I just think that's a great word. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, it turned out that, that we had over two hundred hours of meetings. To, to come up with that ordinance, and it was, you know, we're, we're kind of a little, um, how should I say, provincial about it? It was a lot of work. Um, okay, so let's, uh, can I have a?
I'll, I'll move to approve this item as submitted.
Second.
Second, Peter? Nope.
Yeah.
Peter, okay. Um, any discussion of the motion? No, no, no. Okay, can we have a little call, please?
Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Blue?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman is still absent. Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Thank you. That vote is unanimous with the members we have present. It is appealable to the city council with forms found at the planning office within the next three days because it is a wireless application.
Okay, moving right along, uh, Commissioner comments?
I have a kind of comment question on the policy of public testimony when someone gets up. And you ask them to state their name if you, if they're comfortable to. When did that policy shift to if you're comfortable to leave a name?
I believe it is a, um, I'm not sure if it comes from the Brown Act. I believe that's where it is. There, the public is not required to state their names. And that's why I let them know they don't necessarily need to. It's not a requirement. They can remain anonymous if they choose to.
Thank you.
But, but no one knew that before we started doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm not going to be able to attend the December twelfth, uh, hearing, public, uh, here, public clinic.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for letting me know.
So that, that, that requires a, a, a little discussion amongst the commissioners, because is there anyone else that's going to be out? Because we have a quorum to worry about.
I won't be there after the twentieth, but. Okay, we don't have one by, by then.
Okay, no action.
I guess you could check with, uh, Commissioner Freeman just to make sure.
So the next, so the next meeting, so there is a point of clarification here. The next meeting, uh, is going to be on, uh. November twenty-eighth.
Oh, November twenty?
Yes, so I, I realize on the planning update, it cites the next tentative agenda for December twelfth.
Said before or after Thanksgiving?
That would be after, after. So yes, uh. Uh, Chair Dawson makes a great point. If anyone's gonna be unable to attend that and they are aware of that right now, it'd be nice to, to be made aware.
It would be useful.
Yeah.
I gotta check with my wife.
Me too.
Request from the, for the commission to confirm their availability for that meeting date. We do have a, uh, a larger item. Tentatively scheduled for that meeting, so, um, would definitely want to get a quorum, um, established ahead of time.
Okay, I can do that one. Should we just make it a regular habit during member comments to announce beforehand? If there's going to be an absence, I think that's.
It wouldn't hurt, that wouldn't hurt, right?
You know, because it, it, it puts everybody on notice, uh, instead of at the last minute or, you know, something happens and the person can't show up and then.
I think we can agree among ourselves. We can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no fast and hard rule need apply. Um, okay, informational reports.
Sure.
Believe I.
Yeah, just quickly, as you probably saw on the packet, um, just follow-up from city council. Uh, the, uh, ordinance establishing a rental inventory and rental registration was approved, um, on second reading, so. Um, I think it was the third second reading and that it got approved on. So that did happen on November seventh. Um, you'll also note a few, uh, historic rezonings that this commission saw, uh, that was moved forward to city council. Were also, um, approved and adopted as presented. Um, and then also the, uh, forwarded from this commission to city council was the ordinance establishing. Um, the cannabis business overlay was also, uh, approved as presented, um, at city council on December seventh. Uh, so that's, uh, the extent of the council update. Uh, did want to briefly mention, as you may have seen in the packet. Um, and what's been, uh, asked about, uh, uh, from this commission is different training opportunities for planning commissioners. Um, timely, um, uh, email came across my desk from League of California Cities. Uh, they have their planning commissioners academy that is open for registration. Um, that's going to be held March sixth through the eighth, uh, in twenty-twenty-four. It is in Long Beach, California. Which I realized is a little bit of a trip for a lot of the people on this commission. So, um, I looked, it didn't appear that there was going to be a virtual attendance option. Um, but did want to go ahead and put that on, uh, this commission's radar. Um, I will check with, uh, the community development director to see if there's any, um, financial.
Is it gonna be Queen Mary again?
I don't, I don't recall, actually.
I think that's the last one was down there.
And you went to that? Yeah, and I, oh, can you describe it just briefly? I'm sorry, can you give us a quick, uh?
Very informative, obviously, when you're, you've never, you've come onto the planning commission, because it's, is, it's an academy for PCs. And, uh, it, it was up to date and it was. The mixing of all the groups, so you get to talk to planning commissioners from other places was very helpful. Um. And. I suggest that it would be a good idea for any new planning commissioners to attend. And because it's, it is primarily an updated of all the old practices. The chair as well.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's given that we're being hit by new, uh, Senate bills, requirements and mandates. Got a couple of times a year now, at least, you know, they're really, I mean, ass and furious.
Yeah, but something that I got out of it is that we're doing all the right stuff. What, what we do here, what we do here is, is what they're, they're suggesting that be done in the future.
Yeah, and, and there were some people explaining things, they, the presenters were aghast. Um, that they were doing those kind of things at this day and age because they were old practices. And nobody had attended this training for updates, so they were still continuing them. And I, that's one reason why in my mind, we, we need to send people to those presentations.
Yeah, and so there was, uh, like, were there, like, numbers of different events you could attend? Or was it basically one stage with, you know, a series of speakers or something?
It, it was generally the updated practices of, and the information of projects coming down the line. So it, it, that's why I said it covered the whole gamut of, from new people to existing people that were chair. Uh, to update them on the practices and then a lot of colloquy between the table, among the tables. So you get a very good rounding of the actual practices of different commissions.
Yeah, to answer your question, Commissioner Latassa.
Worth the time.
It appears it's, it's, it's conference style, so it's various sessions, scheduled out sessions, um, so, yeah.
Levi, is there going to be a, another update? Levi, is there going to be another update presented to the planning commission regarding the housing element?
Sure. Yeah, we actually are awaiting our review, our, our formal review comments from state HCD at this point in time.
I ask that because I, I remember that there's a cutoff December fifteenth or something.
Uh, that's, that's the statutory deadline for certification. However, there is a one hundred and twenty day grace period, so that kicks us out April fifteenth, which we're, we're on pace for.
We're doing okay?
Doing good. Good, yeah. We had a preliminary meeting with HCD just to kind of touch base, get a feel for what comments we're going to be receiving. It was, we were, we were pleased with the level of comments that we, we got from that meeting, so I think we're on, we're on pace for, for certification.
It's interesting, you know, Carmel only has to do three hundred forty nine units, I think, something like that.
Yeah.
And they're all up in arms. They have a small city, but it's, it's, it's interesting to see how they're kind of taking a different tack than we are.
A hundred and eighty degree different tack.
Yeah.
When I have local inter.
Yeah.
Yep, they're brutal.
Just also I'll touch on, going back to the training opportunities, I did notice when I was looking at the registration information for the planning commissioners academy. I thought this was pretty interesting. They have the previous year's academies materials available on the website. So I think that could also be beneficial for those of you who are not going to be available to attend that academy. As Commissioner Brassville mentioned, they, they do current up to date trainings, but even referring to training materials from last year would still definitely be very beneficial.
The League of California.
California Cities, that's correct. So all their PowerPoints from all their sessions from last year's academy is available on the website, so could also be very informative for this group.
Where it is.
Levi, I was told that the League of California City does regional quarterly meetings. And they, that includes a committee that addresses planning commission issues?
I'm not sure if they have a specific committee. I know our city manager's office and our city attorney's office attends the quarterly meetings. So I'm, I would have to consult with them to know if they, how targeted those meetings are to groups like this one. But I'm happy to look into that.
I assume they have, you know, special sessions on how to deal with mind numbing technology.
Yeah, I was told in the past that they, they had specific meetings on cell towers. And that was after we finished.
Damn.
And then just to wrap it up for the planning update, like I noted on here, this is the tentative agenda for the December twelfth meeting is on here. But we do also have on the November twenty eighth meeting tentatively scheduled as the North Fremont Hotel or the Abbott Hotel. Again, with additional environmental review, so I'll be coming back for this commission. And that's all I have.
So Levi, another issue that came up in front of city council was the Mills Act, and there was a temporary suspension of that for ten months, I think. Who's going to be working the assessment? Is Matthew going to be the primary contact for?
So it's our hope to have a more technical and somewhat robust financial analysis of the program as a whole. So we're hoping to, that decision hasn't been made yet on exactly how, whether or not we would do that in-house using our finance department in conjunction with the county assessors office to get a better understanding of what the actual fiscal impacts have been of that program. Or if we would outsource that to a consulting firm that would have more resources to, to prepare that in a more timely manner. So that decision's yet to be made, but that's kind of what our goal is, to have some kind of analysis done that really provides the numbers as far as what the fiscal impact has been to tax revenues and then get a better understanding of how the program's functioning and if it's functioning in the way that it was intended to. And it's, I don't think it's the city's intent or the community development department's intent to do away with the program. Perhaps a restructuring of the program may be necessary if the analysis shows that it's not really achieving or reaching the goals that were originally intended. But that's, that's the purpose of the moratorium as we were just seeing a lot of these coming through at once, whereas other cities, for instance, I don't know if you, if you watched the city council meeting, a gentleman spoke who's working on this type of program in the city of Salinas. And they've had, I think, three, he said like three Mills Act contracts since the inception of their program versus we've had sixty. So it's kind of community to community, these programs have, are different effects, so.
It's very surprising because Salinas has a lot of really cool historic properties.
Yeah, and I believe that gentleman said he was working with the city to, to get the program back up and running to incentivize historic preservation.
I was on their historic preservation committee for several years.
A positive note, I, I noted that the city's now isn't trying to put work on some kind of a program to advertise these sites. And I thought that was a positive sign. If we're doing the work, we, we should be able to present these to the public in some form.
Yeah, the libraries has a really great app that shows a lot of the historic properties and has interactive walking map as a part of that.
Send us a link to that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so it's four what, four fifty three?
That's correct.
Time, time to leave.